Thank you, this is the St. Andrews Task Force meeting. And I'm going to introduce the task force. And from left to right, Valerie Augustine, Booth Bay Harbor Selectmen. Select person, sorry. Chuck Cunningham, who represents the Town of Booth Bay, is the chairman of the four selectmen for the Town of Booth Bay. Stuart Smith, Edgecombe Selectmen. And Smith Clima, a selectman from the Town of Southmore. Presenting. And we have some guests here. Anybody that comes to our regular meetings of the task force, I'm not usually speaking. Chuck is usually leading the meeting, but it's easier this way. But we have some guests here tonight in LSP. So our attorney, who of you have heard a lot in the last few weeks, Julius Sobronowitz from Cozak and Geyer. And then to his left is Ralph DeBarro. Our new, recently hired consultant, who will be working with Advantage. Primarily the reason why we're meeting in this large venue tonight is so that we can hear from them. So the first thing that I'd like to do is summarize what has happened in the last three months to draw us into another meeting in the Booth Bay Region Elementary School Gymnasium. Because we all don't like to be here in this larger crowd talking about any public item. Because that means there needs to be a large audience. And then while I'm thinking about it, thank you to the elementary school and the school district for allowing us to use this place. I don't know if you saw the staff in here, but they put this together in about 30 minutes. It was great. Thank you to the elementary school and the CSD. But about three months ago in August, the Lincoln County Healthcare announced that there were going to be some significant service changes at our beloved hospital, St. Andrews. When that was announced, there was a public officials briefing, and our public officials went to a meeting in which the service changes were introduced to them for the first time. It came as a little bit of a surprise to our public officials. And immediately, we had our first meeting, which many of you were at here in the gymnasium, kind of not knowing what we were going to do with this new news. And really, that first meeting, we had a few more selectmen because we absolutely had no direction. But what came of that meeting was a large show, a show similar to the one tonight, and it said, "Please look at this and see what or anything that can be done." And they put together the task force. Through interlocal agreement, the four towns have signed and said, "We agree to these terms to put together this task force to investigate, collect data, and come up with some recommendations on what we can do in the future." And then we stumbled through a few weeks of not knowing exactly how that was going to work, putting together meetings, meeting every single week. And you'll see on the agenda that we meet on Tuesdays at the Town of Booth Bay Town Office and the Selectmen's Meeting Room at 7:00 PM. So we've met ritualistically at 7:00 PM in Booth Bay every single Tuesday, and we packed that venue as well. And there was no way you couldn't tell what the crowd there wanted people to do, is investigate further, come up with some conclusions, and look at these changes. And it started to take shape. And I'm sure if you saw on the way in, we have dedicated volunteers now. And they have been coordinated, and I see Peggy peeking around the corner, but they've been coordinated with precision. We've hired an attorney. We've raised money, which we'll talk about shortly, and we've hired a consultant. Now, three months later, very, very organized. As a municipal manager, I'm jealous of how organized we are right now. So I wanted to make sure that we addressed that summary, because some people have been showing up tonight, first time engaged in what is being discussed as, and you'll see the St. Andrews Task Force, you'll see signs that say "Save St. Andrews," you'll see petitions that have been put around with specific wording. But let's get us back to center and back to the discussion that we're going to have tonight. And that brings on our first speaker, and that's Julius Sobronowitz from Cozak and Geyer, who is our attorney for the St. Andrews Task Force. Now, he's going to explain some of the things that he looked at, and some of the things that, in his legal opinion, should be looked at further. Now, depending on how long it takes him to explain that, we'll address whether we can take some questions. But like we have always stressed, and anybody that's watched on Channel 7, anybody that's attended our meetings, that probably the key element to a legal strategy is not laying it all out there, but discussing some of the topics. So there may be some aspects to this conversation that we simply have to just wait until a further date. But at some point in time, everything will be out there transparent, like the task force has done from day one. So let me introduce Julius Sobronowitz.
Thank you, Jim. It's great to be here and glad to be on board. Like Jim indicated, I'll be glad to provide a general outline this evening of some of the things that I've looked at on behalf of the task force in the Town of Booth Bay. That being said, I think it's important to realize from the outset that honestly, the true win-win is to work collaboratively with Lincoln County Healthcare. Oh, sorry. The true win-win would be to work collaboratively with Lincoln County Healthcare and with Main Health. All right. So tonight, what I'll be doing is introducing myself, giving you an idea of what my role will be, but not necessarily laying out technically a legal strategy. That's really not a proper forum, and we will follow up on that. And I obviously will take questions afterwards from anybody that does have questions. So as Jim indicated, my name is Julius Sobronowitz. I'm a partner at the firm of Cozak and Geyer located in Augusta, Maine. And our firm specializes in hospital law. It's what we do 100% of the time. I've done it for 15 years. We represent hospitals just like St. Andrews, small rural community hospitals located throughout northern New England. I'm privileged to be here with the representation in the communities that you represent. I know that many of you have been supporters and have close connections to St. Andrews. I also know that many of you are deeply concerned about the impact that the closure would have on this community. I am familiar with St. Andrews and the Booth Bay Region. I actually used to spend summers here during high school and college. I grew up in Winston, about an hour and a half away, and Booth Bay was one of our rivalries, actually.
Still is.
Yes. My recollection is that you guys kind of handed us our heads in football, at least back then. And we returned at least sometimes the favor in basketball. I don't know when it is anymore. But I'm very familiar with the area. I'm very familiar with the strong communities here and the impact this sort of decision could have. Although we're prepared to pursue legal remedies, on behalf of the town and its inhabitants, our primary goal, again, is to avoid any antagonism or adversarial relationship with Main Health and Lincoln County Healthcare. My hope is that after hearing your concerns that you expressed here tonight and otherwise, that the closure decision will be reconsidered. Accordingly, it is not my intention to discuss our legal strategy. Such a discussion would be premature, it would be counterproductive, and hopefully unnecessary. Also, it wouldn't be in your best interest in this forum. My role tonight is to listen, to introduce myself, and provide a little bit of background. Both Main Health and Lincoln County Healthcare provide excellent quality service. Their commitment to provide quality healthcare is not questioned here either. That is not the issue. Our goal is to demonstrate to them the significance of this decision to you, and to convince them that this is not in your best interest. Quite frankly, it's in both of your best interests to work this out collaboratively and working together. I know your comments this evening will be positive and thoughtful. Nothing can be gained by attacking the other side. I am hopeful that they listen carefully this evening to your comments and concerns, as I will also, and are open and willing to work collaboratively with the town to preserve St. Andrews as your community hospital. Briefly, with respect to my role as being engaged as your attorney, I've been engaged to preserve and protect the rights of the Town of Booth Bay, with respect to its community assets, St. Andrews Hospital, that's been here for over 100 years. To give your communities a voice, after a voice in the decision-making process, a voice that appears to have been missing so far. To help you convince Main Health and Lincoln County Healthcare that the communities actually served by St. Andrews need this hospital and oppose its closing. If collaborative efforts fail, then, and only then, will we indeed pursue legal options. But that quite frankly is not where we're at at this point. What is this all about? I think that Jim has probably captured the issue in the task force for you already. But quite frankly, it's about the health and well-being of the Booth Bay Region residents. It's about saving a hospital that has been here for 104 years. It's about access to healthcare for rural communities in Maine and elsewhere. It's about transparency and fair dealings. It's about generous time of support that you and your neighbors have provided for the St. Andrews Hospital, your community hospital, for more than a century now. It's not about the quality of Main Health. It's not about the quality of Lincoln County Healthcare. Both are outstanding. It's not about the quality of St. Andrews either. It's the same outstanding healthcare. What are the issues? From 30,000 feet, the biggest issue is that the decision to close your community hospital was made without your community input. St. Andrews is a tax-exempt nonprofit organization. That means it's supposed to have a community board that makes decisions that are representative of the community it serves. A charitable board is essentially a caretaker of a nonprofit organization and its assets. For over 100 years now, this community has generously supported St. Andrews through your time and generous support. You, your parents, your grandparents built this hospital. You gave support for the purpose of maintaining a hospital in Booth Bay. The question is, among others, what will become of all those resources and efforts should your hospital be closed? Without getting into detail, but just very briefly, the loss of community control did not occur overnight. As many of you are sure know, back in 1997, St. Andrews was the first hospital to affiliate with Main Health. This affiliation made St. Andrews a wholly owned subsidiary of Main Health. There were many very good reasons, and still are. In 1997, without affiliation occurred, there were assurances that a 24/7 emergency department would remain at St. Andrews. Again, just by way of background from 30,000 feet, 10 years later in 2007, as many of you know, Main Health created a parent corporation for St. Andrews and for Miles. That, of course, is Lincoln County Healthcare. Main Health is a sole member of Lincoln County Healthcare, and there are many sound reasons for creating a parent corporation. Among them, efficiencies and many, many day-to-day activities. The result, however, as you know, is one board, one management team. Instead of the traditional board, it was represented by the Booth Bay community, which is what existed back when St. Andrews stood alone in 1997, and is what existed for those first 10 years. You now have, instead of a traditional board, you've got a single CEO, a single group of individuals appointed by Main Health, who wear three hats. They serve simultaneously as the Board of LHC, LCH, excuse me, Lincoln County Healthcare, as the Board of Miles, and the Board of St. Andrews. Although the governance structure works very well in many respects on day-to-day activities, a potential built-in conflict does exist when the interests of one community somehow differ from that of another. For example, when the interests of Miles Community Hospital differ from St. Andrews. That is exactly the situation here, and what I believe promoted a decision that, in my view, did not focus specifically on the needs of this community. It is clear that the communities of Booth Bay and the surrounding areas, if they were aware of the plan to close St. Andrews, they would have opposed it. It is your community hospital. It affects the future well-being of your community, and today, we have an opportunity, today and in the future, to have your voices finally heard. Again, it is my foremost and primary purpose to work with everybody, all parties, Lincoln County Healthcare and Main Health, and obviously St. Andrews towards working a resolution that works. To help you provide good information to Main Health and Lincoln County Healthcare so they can make a better decision. That's the plan. At this stage, as far as a legal strategy, it's not something that really, we haven't reached that point of discussing the details of it. The idea is to work together, if possible. So I'll take any questions if Jim wants me to.
Am I on? Okay, so I think it's probably proper that we take a couple of questions. Chuck is in charge of the meeting, I'll always point that out in every single meeting. So as he points out, somebody to take a question, we'll see if Julius can answer that question. So would anybody like to ask a question, Julius?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Do we have time?
You have time, I think you did. Yes, I do, at least.
You do.
Sorry, what do you want?
I said, "Do we have time?" Because this is supposed to take place April 1st. Do you feel, as our legal person, that we have time to get this solved?
I can appreciate that. I understand that it happened very suddenly, and I appreciate that it was a quick decision. I do believe you have time, in the sense that, as I understand it, the folks that made the decision are now, are listening and hearing your voices, so I do believe you have time. Can everybody get in this back corner here, because we noticed that the speaker isn't working properly on this side. So if we could get you to state your name and maybe your residence when you ask the question.
Thank you, Jim. Julius in Grove, thank you. My name is Fred Birdy, and I'm a resident of Booth Bay. I'd like to call yours and everybody in the audience attention to a document that's available at the front, if you'll even, and it may be on some of the desk. I think it's important that both you and Ralph review this also. It speaks to a lot of the issues and concerns that people have had. It gives specific examples of issues, concerns, good things that have happened at St. Andrews, and it reflects the importance that we feel for this hospital and the community, and the efforts that the task force is going through. So please take this, digest it, and make good use of it. Thank you.
Kathleen Willis, and I'm a resident of Booth Bay Harbor. When you say that you want to represent our interests and not be antagonistic toward the other side, I'm not suggesting you get in a free-for-all back and forth, but it's been antagonistic, in my view, from the beginning, when we weren't given much notice. And although they say, you say they're listening, I've read some of the letters of Mr. Donovan, and he politely smiles, and he says, "We're listening, we're listening," and then conclusion, "We're doing what we want, we're doing what we want, we're doing exactly what we said we were going to do." So my question, at some point here, I don't see how, I know we have to try to work together, but they've been pretty antagonistic, and I don't think that we can expect them, from the letters I've seen printed anyway, and other things in the paper, that they're going to be any more amenable to really listening or make a change than three months ago.
Absolutely. I can appreciate that, and I totally understand that. From this perspective, I think in part your question is, have I explored the legal remedies? Yes, I've personally explored the legal remedies. As any, hopefully, good attorney would tell you, the best thing is to work, if possible, collaboratively to reach a solution. But if we investigate it, yes. Am I intimately familiar with most of the issues? As far as the antagonistic and adversarial piece, I think, again, working collaboratively, if possible, is best, but we certainly have explored all of your legal issues, rest assured. Last, ask my law partners that. I'm standing in the back, a couple more questions.
Eric Gomain. My question is, do we plan to have Main Health continue managing St. Andrews, or has a different party take it over?
That's actually not a question that I can answer, because that's strategically, I guess, a discussion for the Town of Booth Bay, and the surrounding towns, and the task force with the Lincoln County Healthcare folks. I wouldn't be privy to that specific piece. It's a really good question, and one that the task force has discussed, is where does this point us, what direction does it point us as far as? But I don't think Julius is the right person to answer that question, although he probably is the right person to answer a lot of questions. But let's try to stick these ones to Julius's forte in legal matters.
Ken Chancis of Residence of Booth Bay. I have a question to ask you, which I think speaks to a lot of issues. One is that we were kind of put on the spot when this decision was made to do this, as she said. But my wife brought up a good point, and she mentioned that the hospital being a corporate entity was saying, or was part of the main hospital groups and Lincoln Hospital group, she says, "They're part of a larger group, and they're part of a corporate group," so you know, all of a sudden, these people are taking over. We saw this feeling that they can help and answer it, and they can do that. All of a sudden, these guys say, "We don't want to play anymore." So what is the purpose of that?
That they have decided they don't want to play anymore?
Yeah. That's what a sudden decision like this causes.
No, I appreciate that, and again, that's a question more from Lincoln County Healthcare and Main Health. You are right, I mean, there is a specific corporate organization with all three organizations, but I can't speak to their mental state and their thought process. I can't even begin to project, unfortunately, sorry.
I want to ask a question. Tom Hagan of Booth Bay. You mentioned earlier that in your talk, that the boards of trustees of the three institutions involved, Lincoln County Healthcare, Miles Memorial, and St. Andrews, are all appointed by Main Health. I've been curious about exactly what the mechanism is by which we've ended up with the board that we have. Is that, in fact, what has happened? That the board of the three institution board, which is coincidental in that all the same people are on all three boards, are they appointed by Main Health?
I believe that is the case, and I, again, if that is the case, it was a decision that would have been made by the parties to agree to that. I'm not familiar with their specific bylaws in their appointment process, but I understand the corporate structure is that there is one board that speaks for all three. And I, again, not being familiar with their specific organizations in that manner, I suspect there may be many occasions where it is very helpful in day-to-day issues. What has happened, in this case, is you have differing conflicting interests. So we're going to take one last question, although I know that we could ask questions of Julius all night long, and the task force has tried to.
I'm Tom Talon from Sawyer's Island in Booth Bay. My question is, we are in, we will be in negotiations with Lincoln County Health and so forth, and what is our position with regard to any pressure we can bring on them? In other words, they're not going to voluntarily change their views, I don't believe. Do we have any legal position which we can use to force the acceptance, or at least the consideration, of a view which is so contrary to what Dr. Phil and Dr. George wanted? Do we have any legal recourse to them?
I think you do. I think that you do have some legal recourse. I think there are some serious legal issues, not ones that I'd be willing to chat about in detail right here, but I also think that the fact that you have, the town has motivated in the fashion that it has, speaks volumes. I do believe, I do believe the people that make these decisions are hearing that. I hear it from you clearly. And I know that the task force has engaged a consultant also. I know Mr. DeBarro will be chatting after me. It's certainly far better versed on the clinical side of things and the real needs of these communities, but in the answer to your specific question, yes, I think there are some legal avenues. And obviously, if the parties cannot cooperatively reach an agreement and comfort with the decision, then we certainly would be willing to explore some of those.
But you have explored them already yourself.
Yes. So at that point, I'm going to let Julius off the hook. Jane, we really appreciate Julius, and I practice as Dame Sobronowitz. I can say in perfection. And if you think it's hard to represent, what we've put together is this task force that meets every Tuesday. It is, it's very challenging, and Julius and Cozak and Geyer has put together a really good argument that our legal team has taken a look at. And I'll have to tell you that I'm personally impressed, and we want to thank Julius for coming tonight and speaking to the group. So for ease of access in the meeting style, this is usually Chuck's meeting to run, but I've been playing facilitator, so I'm going to continue to do that. We're going to conduct a little bit of a regular St. Andrews Task Force meeting, and then we're going to get to Mr. DeBarro, which is the main reason why we need large numbers of people to be at this meeting and the continuing meetings, is because we'll need lots of community engagement. So the next part of our meeting, I moved it up. Usually, we do our financial and fundraising reports at the later part of the reports. But we had a significant change to our finances just recently. But Paul Kulo has made a significant donation of $25,000 to the St. Andrews Task Force. I think that is a well-deserved round of applause. Speaking for the task force, we are certainly grateful to Mr. Kulo for his donation. We have not yet had the opportunity to talk to him about his intentions in the donation, but we will do that. But on this week, which is Thanksgiving Day week, what a better time to recognize the people that give to our community, and not just Paul Kulo and $25,000, but the rest of my report.
of my report, that we've raised $32,582.53, as well as that $25,000 donation. And anybody that's paid attention to the task force, that's people making $5 increment donations, that's people making $50 increment donations, 100, 1,000, we've seen lots of different sizes of donations, and in order to hire an attorney, in order to hire a consultant, we needed those dollars. So, we appreciate everybody, and this is a great week to kind of give thanks to the community on what we do have here. Now additionally, we have the Second Opinion Fund. Now, I know that we have a large group here, so why do we have the Second Opinion Fund? Well, the Second Opinion Fund was created with a specific goal of funding the consultant, which ends up being Mr. Guevara's group. So, that's the specific goal of the Second Opinion Fund. Now, obviously, the two funds are gonna work hand in hand. If you give to the St. Andrews Task Force Fund, that's a public fund that's being managed by the town of Booth Bay, completely publicly to give donations. There's some people who want to give anonymously, the Second Opinion Fund is the best avenue for that. If you have questions about how to give to either fund, see me, or see Peggy Pallas, and there are pledge cards inside your brochure. Two words, starts with N. So, that's our financial report. Now, we have had some expenditures, I'll get into those in detail, probably at a smaller meeting, if you'll allow me to do that. The next group that we'd like to report from, and we haven't rehearsed this, we got everybody in the door, and then we figured it out afterwards, but the Community Hospital Work Group has been reported regularly, and it looks like Patty Sebold is gonna be there.
Bruce McDonald is very sorry he can't be here tonight, so I'm reporting on behalf of our Community Hospital Working Group, and as Jim reported, we have self-organized, and we have several different working groups, and our Community Hospital Group is really focusing on what is the future of St. Andrews, assuming that the legal strategy works, and we can gain control either of a board of our own that's elected by the community, or taking back the hospital entirely. We want to figure out what do we need to do with St. Andrews, and how are we gonna run it profitably? So, what I wanted to report tonight is that we will be handing out copies of these, one per household, I hope we don't run out, if we do, we have some more coming tomorrow. This is a summary of interviews that I've done with 48 people in all four towns, and the reason that I did these interviews was because, as everybody has said, nobody asked us what we thought about St. Andrews, so I decided to ask, and I went, basically spent 30 minutes on the phone with the people who volunteered to talk to me, and those people range in age from 14 to 91, and they all have a lot of really interesting ideas and opinions. It's not just emotion, it's also very thoughtful and insightful ideas about what a community hospital should be for us on this peninsula, and what services it should provide, and how it can provide those services profitably, and how we, as a community, can make the migration to the Affordable Care Act, the Obamacare, and really kind of be in step with that, following all the legal, you know, the next set of legal requirements, and transitioning from a fee-for-service kind of organization to one where our outcomes as patients and as families are what really counts. So, that's a transition that's happening across the country, it's a transition that every healthcare organization has to make, and I was really interested that there are a lot of people in this community thoroughly understand that, and thoroughly are on board with that, and have a lot of ideas about how we can make that happen here. So, I basically just wanted to tell you that your voices have been heard. What you'll find summarized in here are not all 48 interviews, but stories or little anecdotes from the 48 interviews on the different topics that I ask people about, like, how do you feel about the change in the ambulance service, and what kinds of healthcare services do you need, and what do you think our community needs from the standpoint of health and wellness? And you'll see those summarized here, and then in the next report, you'll also hear that there's a second report that basically analyzes in detail the interviews, and we'll be presenting that at another task force meeting. So, all of this is a prelude to your next involvement as community members. Obviously, 48 people does not represent all 6,000 of you, or the 20-some thousand of you come seasonally. So, we will be, and you'll hear from Ralph shortly, we will be running participatory meetings where, instead of sitting and talking and putting a hand up and getting, you know, 30 seconds with the mic, we're gonna ask you to sit in working groups and to start designing, co-designing with us what the next generation of St. Andrews should look like. And we're gonna have two of those meetings in December, and we're hoping that you will all come and participate. Thank you.
So, the agenda you have in front of you is not the script, it's what we proposed that may be the script, so we're gonna use that in its loosest form. But as Patty was saying that, it made me recognize the things that I didn't say when I was talking about our fundraising efforts, is that the people that have given in-kind donations, like Patty's efforts, which Patty's efforts have been completely given in-kind, Peggy Pallas, who works, is in the town office more than I am, is, her efforts are completely in-kind, and I could do that, and I could go around the room and point out volunteers that have put in hours upon hours, and then anybody that participated with Peggy on Election Day with the petition signing understands how she puts together volunteers, but I wanted to say that as it was on the tip of my tongue. The next thing is, can I bring Peggy up to give us a volunteer coordinator report? Please, everybody, recognize how much work Peggy Pallas...
It isn't me, it's all of you, and you know it. What Jim didn't tell you was that the Second Opinion Fund has raised an additional $9,000. All things to donate are in this little brochure. If you are a volunteer, you get a weekly update, and, last but not least, on November the 30th, St. Andrews Feast Day, we will be having a community potluck at the Firehouse in Booth Bay, complete with entertainment, fabulous food, and all of your faces, I hope, and thank you for being the wind beneath the wings of this incredible volunteering community. It's my honor to serve you.
So, I'm almost to the point of the meeting that we're most here for, and to next to talk about I Vantage and their consultant services. But also, you know, one last time is to recognize all the people that are putting in a lot of work around the holidays, and are gonna continue to put in a lot of work. As Mr. Guevara starts to talk to you, he's gonna talk to you about the community engagement, and when he's saying that, that boiled down is your opinions and your voice, and how we funnel that in a very short amount of time into some serious data that can be then analyzed and put forward. So, now I'm gonna introduce Ralph Guevara, and he is working with I Vantage and Scott Goodspeed, and he's the new consultant for the St. Andrews Task Force.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you all for being here. Your interest in the well-being and the future of your community hospital is evident with the room as full as it is. It's very, very impressive. And I want to also reinforce Julius's comments, I think it's important, and I'm glad to see that representatives from Maine Health and Lincoln County Health are here this evening as well. I am teeming with I Vantage Health to take a look at this project on behalf of the Community Task Force. Before I get into the detail of what we're gonna be doing, just a little bit about myself, and a little bit about Scott Goodspeed, who is the principal from I Vantage that I'll be working with. I've been a small hospital, rural hospital guy, most of my career, having come to Maine in 1974, and working at a small hospital in Lincoln that is now one of Maine's 17 critical-access hospitals, and that would be Penobscot Valley Hospital. I've worked in two others as well, CAD in Greenville. In fact, our permanent home is in Greenville, a community that has typically, in the course of a year, about 2,500 visits to its emergency department, about a little more than half of what St. Andrews is seen. I can't imagine what it would be like in that community, quite frankly, for that emergency room to shut down. I've also worked for the last 15 years at Mayo Regional Hospital in Dover-Foxcroft, similar situation. Scadquis County is very rural, CAD is at the northern portion of the county, and Mayo Regional Hospital is at the southern portion of the county. Scadquis County, geographically, is the size of the state of Connecticut, believe it or not, with a total population in the county of just in excess of 17,000. Closest hospital from Dover-Foxcroft is, there are two hospitals in Vanmore, St. Joseph's Hospital and Eastern Maine Medical Center. Again, having access to emergency services is a fundamental part of a community hospital, in my mind. During the course of my career, I provided leadership in hospitals ranging from 12 to 300 beds, and it's been a span of 38 years. Currently, as I said, my past 15 years have been at Mayo Regional Hospital, I've just retired about a month or so ago, and find myself in the middle of this community situation, this community need, this community issue, and we are charged with looking objectively at a range of information that will help guide the task force into the future. We've also been charged with doing that in an open and transparent way, something that is absolutely fundamental in a process like this. In addition to the work I've done for the last 15 years at Mayo, I've been the former chairman of the Maine Hospital Association Board of Directors, served on the American Hospital Association Small and Rural Council, and more recently, for the last four years, the AHA Region One Policy Board. And in addition, I've also chaired Maine's Critical Access Group, consisting of 17 critical-access hospitals here in the state of Maine. Unfortunately, Scott Goodspeed from I Vantage Health is unable to be here tonight, he had another engagement in New Hampshire. I've known Scott for years, however, we worked together when I, for several years, was in New Hampshire, in the seacoast of New Hampshire, at Watertogus Hospital. Scott, at the time, was the president of the Elliott Hospital, and we shared a regional cancer program together, got to know each other fairly well. Scott has significant healthcare experience, and I Vantage has worked with all sizes of hospitals throughout the country. They offer data-driven advice in the areas of strategy and planning, performance management, and has significant rural experience, expertise, having worked in over 225 critical-access hospitals in the country. There are, in this country, roughly 1,300 critical-access hospitals, very similar to the St. Andrews situation. I do tell people, however, that if you've seen one critical-access hospital, you've seen one critical-access hospital. The range of services varies depending on the community, communities are different. You'll see identical services across the board in many of the critical-access hospitals, and there are some that are unique to a particular community. Our charge is to look at the current situation in Booth Bay and identify some options that may be different than the one that Lincoln County Health has arrived at. Just a little bit of background about critical-access hospitals also, I'm not so sure how well you understand critical-access hospitals and their origin, but basically, the critical-access status was a status that was created in 1998 through the recognition at the federal government level that there are a number of very rural places in this country that need a different type of reimbursement to maintain financial viability. They're fragile, they're small, their volumes are different, but they provide vital services in geographically isolated areas. In fact, in Maine, Blue Hill Hospital and CAD Hospital were two of the very first critical-access hospitals in this country, and they continue to serve their communities very well, as has St. Andrews over the years. With that background in mind, please understand that tonight is not a night for conclusions, it's really an evening for me to talk a little bit about process, and focus on what we're going to be doing. We are very early on in our process, and so what I'd like to share with you here for the balance of my time is what we intend to do, and what our objectives are, and then hopefully we'll have some time for some questions at the conclusion of the presentation. Our objectives are the following. We've been asked by the task force to conduct a market assessment to understand the growth and financial opportunities within this marketplace. In order to do that, we've defined the service area. Unlike Lincoln County Health, which clearly identified a service area based on the two hospitals being looked at collectively for the patients that they serve, we're defining a service area specifically tailored for St. Andrews Hospital, and we'll take a look at cost utilization, population, break down the demographics, and use by profile, profiled by zip code, we'll take a look at the competition that exists, we'll take a look at market opportunities, opportunities for collaboration, we'll also take a hard look at the impact of seasonal fluctuation, very similar here, although to a greater degree than what CAD experiences in the Musset region, a huge influx in that area in the summertime, the population swells from just slightly in excess of a couple of thousand to in excess of 10,000 to 12,000 in the summer months. When I was at CAD, where I worked from 1981 through 1986, we had really a two-year, the year was divided into two segments. We had the time of the year from May until after hunting season, booth season, and deer season, and that's when the community experienced the greatest population and the greatest utilization of services. From the end of November through the following spring... From the end of November through the following spring, things got pretty quiet in Greenville. So you really needed to make it or break it in terms of utilization and financial performance in those, in those core six or seven months of the year. And I'm sure that the seasonal influx of population has that similar type of impact in this area. We will be studying that as well. We've been asked to develop a three-year strategic direction. And within that, development of that three-year strategic direction, we'll be doing some of the following. We're going to be understanding, trying to understand the perspectives of key stakeholders here within the community. Patty alluded to the interviews that we'll be conducting, and there'll be a number of those beginning next week. So if you're on the list and you get contacted, I hope that you'll be flexible in your time and free yourselves up to meet and talk to us about this incredibly important topic that is so germane to the future of the area. There'll be volunteers reaching out beyond, the volunteers here tonight enrolling people as they came through the door, to ask you to contribute your time to answer some important questions that we'll be trying to gather information on. We'll be attempting to quantify the demand for existing services. We'll gauge Lincoln County Health's and Maine Health's willingness to enter into meaningful dialogue. We certainly hope that'll happen. I think that's critical. I think there's an opportunity to step back and do that. There's nothing magic about the April date that has been established by Lincoln County Health. That can be delayed indefinitely. In fact, in some of the work done by Navigant, at one point, I think there was a proposal to implement the closure, but to do it at a much, at a much later time, within a much later timeframe. So I think that's something that can change, and that's in response to, partially, in response to the question that you asked. There is time, but it is going to take, if, if, if we're going to avoid a legal approach, it's going to take the desire and the willingness and the cooperation from the leadership within Lincoln County Health, Maine Health, and the governing bodies, the governing body of that organization as well. We sincerely hope that that will occur. We're, we're, part of the study that will be undertaken, we'll assess the cost implications related to the changes in pre-hospital care requirements. When I say pre-hospital care requirements, I mean ambulance, EMS services. There's been a fair amount in the newspaper about that, significant costs that are associated with needing to bolster was currently available. We want to take a look at that in relation to the anticipated savings that'll occur as result, as a result of the closure of the emergency department, as well as the impact on the hospital through the foregoing of critical-access hospital status, which we would estimate to be in excess of $1 million. It's hard to understand why you can walk away from cost-based reimbursement to that degree. And hopefully, we'll be able to, through dialogue, meaningful dialogue with the individuals from Maine Health, to get an appreciation of what their thought process was there. There is no guarantee that cost-based reimbursement will occur and be sustained in the future. With the pressures on finances in Washington, many of the things that are in place for healthcare may change. But based on much of the work at the AHA Region One level, and what we're hearing, there's no call for that now. If, if it's going to occur, it's not going to occur immediately. But it is, it is something that is potentially at risk. So the hospitals that are currently reimbursed at, in Maine, 109% of cost, and that's for both the Medicare population and the Medicaid population, may not enjoy that reimbursement in the future. But there's no immediate effort to remove that level of reimbursement from, from the critical-access hospitals. One of the other things that we've been asked to do is to test the assumptions in the, that are the result of the Navigant study that led to the current LCH plan. There was a lot of work that went into that plan with a very well-established, highly-respected national organization, but we do believe that in testing those assumptions, we'll be able to identify other options and alternatives for St. Andrews Hospital moving forward. The third thing that we've been asked to do is to facilitate two community engagement meetings. Those will occur before the first of the year, the latter part of December. We need to do some work first, but then we'll move in that direction following the interviews that we have, and solicit your active input, your ideas for wants and needs, for the services that you want to see preserved, see preserved here, or offered, new services that might be offered, that will be relevant to the new healthcare environment in the areas of chronic disease management, for example, wellness, in a, in a way that will improve the health status of the communities. So in summary, what will we be doing? There'll be two days of community interviews. There'll be a written plan that will be provided by January 1 with observations and recommendations. And within the context of all this work, we will be transparent. That's, it's been very clear from the task force that this needs to be a process with an endpoint and associated recommendations that the community fully understands and is engaged in. So that will be our commitment to the task force and to you all as a community. Just returning to the question that I believe is the foremost in the community's mind. We've looked at all critical-access hospital emergency department utilization in the United States, and found that the average number of emergency room visits in 2011 was 5,918, while the median was 5,295. So what does that mean? That means that there are at least 600 hospitals, critical-access hospitals in this country that have emergency room visits less than 5,295, similar to the 4,500, plus or minus that St. Andrews has typically seen. And what that also tells us is that there are critical-access hospitals in the U.S. with emergency room visits less than St. Andrews that remain financially viable. Thank you for your interest in the future of St. Andrews. We look forward to working with the task force, community, and hopefully, Lincoln County and Maine Health leadership.
So Chuck Conningham has told me that we're going to do about five to seven questions specifically for Mr. Guevaro in regards to the study that he plans on doing. So anybody that would like to ask a direct question to Mr. Guevaro, and I'm going to have Chuck recognize you, and I'll point them out, and I'll get the first one.
My name is Phil Brooks. I'm from Southport. You speak of the Navigant, if I understood the term correctly. You know, it's extremely difficult for us to get our minds around this problem when we don't know what the motivating factors were for the decision that was made by Lincoln County Healthcare. Isn't there some way that you can summarize the principal arguments that were made and incented by Lincoln County Healthcare that prompted their decision, so that we can at least know where the enemy is coming from?
The way the report was generated, it, it looked at, at a number of different factors. It was a very forward-thinking study, trying to anticipate where Maine Health and Lincoln County Health feels that healthcare is moving in the future. And the context of that future is one of reducing cost, while at the same time preserving access and maintaining quality. Those are the fundamental principles behind the work that's been done. I can't answer specifically what went on in the, in the retreat environment that Maine Health and Lincoln County Health made their decisions. We haven't had a chance to talk to them about that yet. But at the end of each major section of the Navigant study, there were a series of questions that were posed, and then I'm, I'm sure there was a fair amount of dialogue around each and one, each and every one of those questions that ultimately led to the St. Andrews closure decision for the emergency room. One of the things that was highlighted and focused on in the study was the lack of activity from 12 o'clock in the morning until 6 o'clock in the morning. Very small, small utilization during those hours. And basically, the issue was around productivity and the staff not being fully active seeing patients during that period of time. And I'm sure that generated a significant amount of discussion in the, in the work that was done by Maine Health and Lincoln County Health. I do have to tell you that if you looked around at any of the critical-access hospitals in this state, from 12 o'clock at night until 6 o'clock in the morning, there's not a lot of activity. Most of us are sleeping. So that is a driver, is, does raise some questions, and I think warrants some discussion. The other interesting thing that goes along with that, though, the Navigant study really did a deep, in-depth look at not only the use, the numbers of the emergency department, but also the acuity levels, the degree of emergency needs, the severity of illness, and identifying that a lot of what is cared for in the St. Andrews Hospital setting is of a lower acuity level, stuff that could be taken care of in an ambulatory care setting or in an urgent care center. But also, the, the study did point out that even though the numbers are very small from midnight until 6:00 a.m. in the morning, the, there is a greater preponderance of higher level of acuity during those hours than at other times during the day. So if those, if access to care, emergency care during those hours goes away, the issue then becomes one of a very strong pre-hospital community, higher, a high level of care, and assuming that people can be stabilized and shipped and cared for properly without having the ability to immediately stabilize. So that, that's some of the background. Yes, sir.
I didn't do that. Tom Hagan, again, from Boothby. I've, I've been thinking a lot recently about the Trial of Galileo. Essentially, he was tried by some people, and at one point, he invited his, his, his opponents, who came from the Vatican, and who knew what the truth was. The truth was that the earth was the center of the universe, and they couldn't, and they knew that because they, they learned that from authority. He brought along his telescope and invited them to look through his telescope to see the moons of Jupiter revolving around Jupiter. In other words, he had an alternative truth that was based on facts. Now, it seems to me that we've got a very similar situation here. We have people, many people on the peninsula who are convinced, because they know it from a higher authority, namely Lincoln County Healthcare, that the St. Andrews Hospital Emergency Department has to close because it's not viable. It can't take in enough money to account for the expenses that it must incur. The most telling thing that you said in your remarks had to do with the fact that there are lots of critical-access hospitals who are viable, including quite a few that are smaller than St. Andrews. So my question is, could you expand upon that and give us a peek through the telescope?
It's going to be very difficult for me to get into details other than, there's a lot of data out there, and our work will be qualitative and quantitative in nature. We'll, we'll be looking at the data, and we'll be looking at the financial performance of critical-access hospitals. St. Andrews, by the way, has lost some money some of the years, not huge amounts of money. Some years, St. Andrews has been profitable, if you look at them over the last number of years, from, from the actual day-to-day operations, the care provided to the patients at the hospital. But at the end of the day, if you look at the net bottom-line income through what's generated from investments, that has typically offset some of the small losses that the hospital has seen from day-to-day operations. The way I, the, the way of looking at it from a system point of view, because St. Andrews is part of a system, and St. Andrews had concern about long-term viability, entered into this relationship with a tremendous hospital in, in Maine Medical Center and a strong system in Maine Health, trusting that there would be the support there to allow them to retain their sculptive services, including emergency room services, for the long haul. One of the things that struck me in taking a quick look and trying to get a handle around the big picture, as I said earlier, very early on in this game, if you take a look at the total, and this isn't the total Maine Health budget, this is the Maine Medical Center budget of about $1.45 billion. And then you look at the St. Andrews budget of $13,400,000. That's less than 1% of the total Maine Health budget. Many systems come together and focus on the aggregate, the performance, the net performance of the system, rather than one element, one service line, and look at access, if they have a small hospital, preserving access, preserving the safety net. For some reason, in this situation, again, we, we haven't had any conversations with Maine Health, and there may be good explanations, and I hope that if there are, we'll hear them. But in this situation, the, the end of the, the end result of the retreat was to decide not to take a look at the net, the aggregate performance of the system, but to take a look at the relatively low activity levels of the ED, particularly at those hours of the evening, and decide that it was, for the long haul, would be difficult to recruit providers, retain providers, and maintain the kind of an emergency department that you wanted to be able to guarantee quality results. There's, there is a lot of argument out there that if you, if you see higher volumes of patients, your skills remain at a higher level. That can be debated. If, there's, there's a fair amount of data that would suggest that small rural hospitals, critical-access hospitals generate good quality outcomes. In fact, the, some of the publicly available data that has been out there for a while looks very favorable when you look at St. Andrews. Yes?
I'd love to say I really appreciate your comments because I think it sounds hopeful because you're saying that from what you're looking at, and I think it's going to be all around the country. Little communities like ours can't be judged against other communities. Some states are more like that, and we're going to have to take a look at that and the aging population. And now we're all sitting between those lines and like, you know, the things cities are, and make some kind of, it's not concession, some kind of recognition that how we're right about confidentiality or whatever the services for elderly people as they're all a little older can make up for people getting sick in the middle of the night. But that is what we're going to have to do in this country because we know a lot of people, they're elderly, they're, they're aging, a lot of people, if that's your least here, and we thought we had a hospital to, to handle. So I really appreciate your thoughts about, I remember thinking and making sense to the other side about why we move and judge different.
Thank you. At the end of the day, St. Andrews gave up its autonomy, became part of Maine Health, they ceded governance and the decision-making to the larger board, the larger entity, and now Lincoln County Health. If things are going to change, it's going to have to be with the understanding, shifting an opinion that currently exists of the Lincoln County Health system. One that's been, the one that was arrived at, not abruptly with a lot of careful thinking, I'm hoping that that'll occur, the issues around legalities that Julius introduced earlier are potential avenues to try to force that, but it would be so much better for the community and in terms of the trust and confidence that this community would have in Maine Health for the future, for the long haul, if it was done in a cooperative, collaborative manner. And I truly hope that we'll see some evidence of that here as these discussions proceed.
Tom Litterson, Booth Bay, as I said last meeting, was born at Miles Memorial. Spent three days there. I'm still not a native, but you've had the other 59 years and so many days of my life. If you look at the calendar, the cutoff deadline presumably is April 1st. We have approximately 130 days. Can what you propose be achieved in 130 days? And my second question is, if you look at public asset access TV, all four towns behind this equal.
Great question. I don't know the answer about where the towns lie. I was brand-new to this situation, but that's key. We'll be talking to leaders from all the communities that are in the defined service area that will be, will be considering it to be St. Andrews service area. As I said earlier, and as Julius said earlier, I think there's an adequate amount of time. There's also nothing magic about that April timeline. I think that, at least, it's not understandable to me that there's nothing magic about that, that it could be pushed back until the conversation is complete and there is a plan, there's a final decision, whether from Lincoln County Health's perspective it stays the same, and then there's the legal question that has to be answered, or whether there's some change, some modification of the current plan that would satisfy the community and erase the anxiety that's out there now within the community.
We're going to do two more questions.
I don't even like it. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Why does a hospital exist? To make profit or to help sick?
Hospitals exist as, most of all of Maine's hospitals are 501(c)(3) charitable organizations. So it's to take care of sick people. You do, however, need to, in reality, try to do reasonably well financially so that you can maintain the services you have in place, retain the workers that are so essential, develop new programs. So there is an important aspect of financial performance. It should not be, it should not be the driver. It should not be the driver. It's a factor that absolutely, it's a reality that has to be considered. Hospitals exist to take care of the communities.
No.
I don't think that's what I was trying to say.
That's what I was saying. It's more important, a piece of paper or a dead president's body is more important than a human being's worth staying. That is what I was saying. That's exactly what I was saying.
Let's do one more question.
Jen Brown from Booth Bay. You said that April 1st is, okay. You said April 1st was not a magical number. Does that mean that we could go to a point where we have a summer residence here, a larger population, that would be easier to get important information regarding the hospital and how it's used, their input?
Certainly, if the timeline for the conversation, without the decision being implemented, gets extended beyond April 1st, there will be that larger audience, that larger population that'll be here in the area that can also participate in the conversation. When I said there's nothing magic about that date, that doesn't mean that it still might not occur on April 1st, because that's a Maine Health, Lincoln County Health decision. In my own mind, there doesn't have to be anything magic about it, so let me be clear about that. That's their choice.
Okay, there's going to be a public comment section, but we're going to let Mr. Guevara off the center stage for a minute, but thank you for coming. So I want to wrap up one thing, one item. Three months ago when we were here, I think we, this group, this group that's sitting here making decisions even looked at ourselves and said, "What do we know about healthcare?" But tonight, you've seen that we have one of the better legal minds when it comes to healthcare law on our team, and one of the best rural Maine hospital minds on our team. So this group has done a very good job in making sure that we address concerns like that. What is more important, money, patients, and you go left, you go right. That's the most important thing to this group, is to make sure that they, they respect the question and come up with the right answers. So now I'm going to pass off the mic to our chairman, Chuck Condon, who's going to lead our last, our last point, his conclusions, and then any last public comment, because I know that not everybody's questions have been addressed.
Thank you, Jim. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everybody who came out this evening. I see a lot of familiar faces from the last meeting. I see a lot of new faces that weren't here at the last meeting. When we had our first meeting here in the elementary school, summer was winding down. There was still a lot of summer folks that came to that first meeting. I would say from looking around the room that we have all-year-round residents here now. And this room does look as packed as it was the first time. Thank you all, myself, and from the task force and all of our volunteers. We appreciate all of the time and the energy that you have given us, all of the understanding that you have given us while we look at this extremely difficult issue. I'm still going to ask for some patience. We do need to work with Lincoln County Health, just as Julius said. The only way we're going to come to any conclusions and hopefully reach some middle ground is to work with Maine Health and with Lincoln County Health to see what we can resolve. I've always said from the beginning, I'm hopeful for a positive outcome in this, but we do need patience and we do need to work together. One thing I'd like to say is you folks have been patient with us, while we've had some people working behind the scenes. Tonight, you got to meet the two newest members of the task force, Mr. Sobronowitz and Mr. Guevara. I look forward to working with both entities. I'm sure that Advantage will give us a very good study. They will look at the Navigant study as well and come to their own conclusions on this situation. I look forward to their final report, and I thank you in advance for that. I will open this up to public comment. Is there anyone that has anything to say that we haven't heard in any of the last task force meetings?
And I'll jump in actually. Mr. Pender had said that the data analysis at that point, at one point in time, and he wanted to express what they had done in the public comment section.
Thank you, Jim. I want to make sure that you leave with two documents. Patty briefly explained her research, and I'm going to not so briefly explain it. This is what Patty does for a living. Her billable rate rivals out of yours, Julius. That's her gift and kind. This is a valuable document, and it involves interviewing 48 residents of the Booth Bay Peninsula. This is not the complete transcription. This is her summary. It's kind of anecdotal. It makes for good read, it's interesting stuff. Andrew Twaddle, Andrew is in Missouri of all places. I don't know why you go to Missouri for Maine, but I was, both these are hot off the press. And when I say hot off the press, my copy was warm when Patty handed it to me this evening. Patty spent the afternoon at the copy center copying these at her own expense. Talk about gifts and kind. Copies are available at the door. Copies will be attached to the newsletter. If you don't get the newsletter via your email yet, make sure you do. You can sign up at the door through Peggy, sign up through Friends and Neighbors, get the newsletter. These will be attachments in the coming week, I believe. What Andrew's done, Andrew is a professor of this stuff. He spent his life studying medical care delivery systems throughout the world. We had an interesting conversation late last night about his experiences in Sweden, but this is here. What Andrew has done is taken the complete 48 interviews and analyzed them. In the back is Navigant Report type of charts, if you're interested in that stuff. What he's done, though, in true professorial ways, is to summarize, create a narrative. His executive summary is 10 pages, and it tells you how we've been using St. Andrews Hospital. It kind of tells you what you knew was true. It kind of tells you what you hoped, Lincoln County Healthcare had determined in the past. So please don't leave without this. Last, I have to say, thank you for coming. I was at the first meeting. I've been at several other meetings. I've been on the task force meetings. This is quite another search. I am so encouraged tonight. Just know that your participation makes a difference. It makes all the difference in the world. We will, we will be successful because of community participation. Our cause is righteous. What we're after is a very, very good thing. We're willing to do the work. We're willing to stick together. Give yourselves a round of applause for being here tonight. You're all great folks.
I would like to follow up on Mike's comments. We wouldn't be where we are today without everything the community has done to support us. All of the time, all of the energy, all of the donations, the outpouring from this community, I'm amazed more and more every day, and I've lived here my whole life. For myself, with the task force, thank you very much. I hope that you will keep supporting us into the future. We will keep working on this. And as I said, please be patient. And Maine Health, Lincoln County Health, if you're listening, we do want to work with you.
I was just wondering, has the task force met or is going to meet with Lincoln County anytime soon? Have you guys met at all?
Evelyn, we had one meeting with our executive committee, and there was some informal conversations that a few of us have had. We're hoping for some more formal conversations as time progresses so that we can work together on this issue. Anyone else?
I know that's a long night. So if there are any more questions or comments from the public, but it looks like we have questions and comments.
I just want to make, I just want to make one quick comment. July 31st, I walked into a meeting and we had a bomb dropped on us that the decision had been made about St. Andrews. I walked out of that in my gut. I knew it wasn't right. I knew that we had to do something. This task force was formed, and what this community has done in three months, you people need to walk out of here and feel good, because you've got people that are motivated, they're knowledgeable, and they're excited, and we're moving this process forward. And you can walk out of here tonight as Thanksgiving, go home with your people at Thanksgiving. Be thankful that you've got the people working around here that we have, because we're moving this process forward. We're getting closer to winning every day, and I want to thank all you for being here because you make the difference. You make the difference.
Well, again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. It was great to see so many faces this evening, and I look forward to seeing many of you again next Tuesday night at the Booth Bay Town Office for our regular task force meeting that starts at 7:00 p.m. Thank you again.